All right, we're up and running. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting into order. This is the December 4th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. First item tonight is invocation and pledge of allegiance. And Ms. Jarvis is going to lead us tonight in invocation.
Make sure your phones are turned on.
That's what I was doing.
Mike?
Sorry, Mike, I was calling.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for blessing us with this beautiful place at this beautiful time, at this beautiful season. We ask that you be with us tonight. Give us the courage to do your will. Give us the foresight to do what is best for the county. And we ask for you to return everyone safely home tonight. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Selena. All right, we have a little bit different meeting this evening. We have to elect a chair and vice chair, so I'll turn the meeting over to the county manager for accepting that nomination.
Mr. Chairman, as required by the North Carolina general statutes, at its first meeting in December, a Board of Commissioners is required to reorganize itself by the election of a chair and vice chair, as is the practice of this body. I will now open the floor for nominations for the position of chair.
I would like to nominate Bob White as our chair.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, then I'll just close the nominations and put it to a vote, all in favor of Bob White as chair. Say aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And now we have to do the election of our vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate my colleague and friend, Selena Jarvis, as vice chair.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike. Does anyone else want to... Any other nominations? All right, seeing none, I will close that and call for a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. No one has to shuffle the chairs this year.
I was just, when Ike opened it up, I was just going to say, "Not it."
Right. All right.
Did we need to take a break?
Well, we should reshuffle.
That's what's wrong.
Right. All right, next up is our ethics awareness and conflict of interest reminder. And we usually have the county attorney do that. Megan is out with family this evening, so I will take care of that. Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interests, official conduct, or matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is a duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest. Do any commissioners have any known conflict of interest or appearance with anything on the agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on from that. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Ike, are we going to be able to do a closed session tonight?
Yes, we can.
Okay, just want to make sure. All right, any changes to the agenda, any additions or subtracts?
We didn't discuss the agenda.
I'll pull that out when we get to it.
Okay.
Second motion for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, next up, we have public comment. As always, public comment is open to anyone to come up and speak. They have three minutes to do so. This evening, we have Ms. Cameron Lowe. Good evening.
Cameron Lowe, 1618 Idlet Road in Idlet. And I just wanted to come and issue a public thank you to our community for the events of this past Friday night. As you all know, we had the annual holiday parade and Christmas tree lighting and well over 2,000, 3,000 people, Kevin.
It was packed.
Way over. It was probably the largest one that we've had in years. And there are 900-plus that have already watched it online. We streamed the events that evening as well. So, a lot of our Currituck family enjoyed those festivities. This is, we've been doing the tree lighting, sponsored by Cooperative Extension for over 75 years, and this was our 30th parade, I think, which was sponsored by the Currituck FOP. It was an amazing night, and I do want to issue some specific thanks to our county folks. So, number one, Parks and Recreation did a phenomenal job of helping us get all the things there, get everything set up, clean that facility, make sure everything was looking like it was in tip-top shape. And then they were out picking up trash and putting everything back away this morning. So, thanks to Jason and his crew, obviously Kevin organizing the parade over there on that side and the Currituck FOP. Our communications staff, fire and EMS, the Sheriff's Department, emergency management, everybody kind of got together this year to make sure that it was a safe event that flowed a lot, a lot more smoothly than it could have. Of course, Currituck Government, the YMCA, COA, the Cooperative Extension staff, I got to give my people a huge pat on the back. They worked some long hours and did some heavy lifting on that event, and I really appreciate the work that they did and their families, because you know, we have to rope everybody in for that. It's all hands on deck, so I just want to say thank you to them as well. And thank you to the citizens and guests and parade participants that just made it a wonderful way to usher in the holiday season, and we're just really excited that it was the event that it was. So, thank you all for your support of that, and I know I saw a few of you out there, so thanks for all that you do.
Thank you.
And Merry Christmas.
All right, same to you. All right, I don't have anyone else signed up. Is there anyone who would like to speak that showed up late that did not sign up? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment and move on to Commissioner's report. Mike, would you like to lead us off tonight?
Yes, I'll do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to, you know, again, just, you know, holiday season's here, so is the fireplaces and the heaters, and just be safe out there. When you light a fire, bonfire cooking, whatever, the calls come up, the volunteers are there to support any calls that come in. And that being said, this Saturday, Lower Currituck Volunteer Fire Department at Station 5 in Grandy is having their breakfast with Santa. It starts at 7:00. So, bring yourselves, bring your children, come see Santa Claus, have a nice breakfast, tour the facility, look at the apparatus. You know, if you feel like volunteering, somebody there can talk to you. So, yeah, this Saturday, come out to Station 5, it's right on the highway there in Grandy, Lower Currituck, and they'll be glad to see you out there. That's all I had to say, even.
Thank you. Just kidding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, today's the day. Filing for candidates for the upcoming primary started today and will end on Friday, December the 15th at noon. If you wish to become more involved in the direction you want to see your county go, no better way than to run for county office. Commissioners' seat up for election are at-large, and my computer's messing up, District 1, 2, and 4, the Board of Education, Fruitful Amity Township, and a two-year unexpired at-large seat. The Register of Deeds, Soil and Water District Supervisor. The primary election will be held on March 5th, 2024, and the general election will be on November 5th, 2024. And please be patient when you go into the Election Board office. Our director has resigned, and so please be patient with the lady that's working there. I was not able to attend the Christmas parade on Friday, but I would like to thank our own Kevin McCord and his hard work, Sheila Gregory, the extension staff, and all those people who worked so hard to make our citizens have a wonderful time and get into the Christmas spirit. It does take a lot of hard work, and we appreciate all who made it happen. And thanks also to the citizens who have donated to Operation Santa to make sure children in our county are remembered during the holidays. Your contributions have totaled $8,822, and it's a big shout-out to thank our county employees also for a total of $931 for Blue Jean Friday. And thank you for our county manager for letting them have Blue Jean Friday and the board for passing that also. With the money, the Social Service Department has accepted a total of 498 children to assist at Christmas time. So, thank you, thank you, folks. And Merry Christmas to everybody, and as Kevin always says, remember to be kind.
Did you get Ike into jeans? That's what I want to know.
Did you pay your money to wear jeans on Friday?
I suggested they could do it as a fundraiser, and if they raise enough, I'll put on a pair.
Oh, there we go. All right.
We might all chip in a $5 deal there.
Right, right. All right. Selena?
I also want to thank Kevin and Sheila Gregory and Cameron and her staff and everybody that made the Christmas parade on Friday such a huge success. My favorite part were the reindeer games, the snow machine in the middle there behind the tree. I just sat and watched the kids for, I don't know, a long time, because they were just having a ball, because we don't get to see snow here in the county very often. And that just did my heart, it just warmed my heart. Then we went in, and there were snowball fights inside, making of ornaments, and just all the reindeer games, the kids of all ages, there were even some adults in there doing those things, too. And I got a big chuckle at Billy Caudle. I guess he chose his station poorly. He was at the end of the snow, so he was getting covered every time the snow machine. But it was a great event. The parade was fantastic, and I just really enjoyed myself. I also had the opportunity yesterday, the Elizabeth City State University Choir performed at my church, Mount Zion in Grandy, and they just did such a beautiful job. We are so blessed to have such a network in our county to be able to bring this season into perspective. And it was just, it was almost a religious experience to hear those beautiful young voices raised up as they performed Handel's Messiah. It was, it was beautiful. And then I just want to give a shout-out to Holland and Associates that had their ribbon cutting last week. Thrilled that another business is making their way to Lower Currituck to bring mental health help to our county. I think it's so important that we expand that network of mental health care, so I welcome Holland and Associates to the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody's been so positive. I have to deliver something a little not-so-positive. It seems typical this time of year. For whatever reason, people tend to pass away around the holidays. We've lost a few people. Don Cheek of Corolla Light, who managed that resort for 30 years at least, passed away over the weekend. He was down in Florida. And, you know, Don, when I first, my dad built the end at Corolla Light, and I moved down here to help him run that in 1996, and it's, that was, he was one of the first people that I met. And Rhonda and him could be seen walking all over the resort all the time, and we opened an ice cream shop across the house from their street, which was not good for Don, because he would come in and get milkshakes and ice cream cones, probably more frequently than Rhonda would have liked, but it made him walk a little bit more. So, we also lost Heidi at the Currituck Club in recent weeks, and hopefully no one else this time of year. But Don, you'll be missed. Farewell and Godspeed, and... Kick it over to Commissioner Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had, Don Cheek's is one of the very first people I ever was introduced to when running for county commissioner as the guy with the pulse, so he will be missed. He was a wonderful individual to talk to, and I just enjoyed spending time with him. Along those lines, I had the opportunity to go to the Heritage Park yesterday, and the ice rink, which isn't really ice, which is good and bad. It's good in that it's not cold, right? It's bad in that it's not ice, right? So, it's called Glice. And what a cool-looking facility. I mean, last night was perfect. There was a little bit of fog in the air, and the lights were shining down on it. And, you know, it was funny, because you could see the ice rink from 12. It was so bright, you could see it from 12. And so, you know, talk about a loss of night vision. But in talking to the people attending or managing or running it, it's completely free to everybody. So, they have skates that you can wear, you can get on the Glice for, you know, I don't know how long. I think it's until you're black and blue, and then they...
They pull you off.
They don't even have to use Zimboni to pull you off. It's basically just, you know, hook, line, and sinker. So, that was kind of cool. And, you know, the hours, their current hours are predominantly Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I could probably pull it up, actually. I took a picture.
It's on the website, yeah.
Okay, it's on the website. And then the hours are going to expand, I believe, starting this weekend. They're going to start being, they will start being open longer. So, for those that aren't familiar with the park, it's right by the Wildlife Museum, the Maritime Museum, and it's like basically across the street. So, talking to them the opening day, I think they had 450 people go, and that was Black Friday. They've had, they're averaging somewhere around 150 to 200 people a day since then. So, it's, you know, it's kind of cool. I also did a flashlight inspection walk-around of the playground, which was kind of creepy, depending on who you talked to. So, a couple of things I noted, and I don't, one of them is, is the intent going to be to put a gate across it, or is it going to remain wide open?
I don't believe there is. I don't believe there is to be a gate at this point.
Okay, we should check, we should check with somebody and make sure that's, I think we have gates at most of our little kid playgrounds.
I think so.
Maple?
No. I go to all of them. Take Kinsley all the time.
Not Barco, Maple.
TCA doesn't have.
Okay, all right.
Knott's Island neither.
All wide open.
Okay.
Just wall ride in.
Okay, well, I thought the gate, there was a gate by...
There's a gate at Knott's Island for the whole park itself.
No, but I thought there was a gate at Maple Park by the airport. Okay.
Dog park gate, that's better.
Got it. Anyway, things look cool. I mean, the matting was nice and squishy, you know? I think there's a lot of good features that'll be there, and so, there's a couple of issues that I let, I think you know.
Yes.
And that, once that gets taken care of, I think we're good to go. And the goose is still the goose. That's all I have, is trimming.
All right, thank you. Kevin?
I wrote down, and you try not to forget, people, I wrote down, and Cameron took some of my thunder, but no, I'm just teasing. The Christmas parade was a success. There was a lot of people there. I was hoping like the weather would maybe slow it back a little bit, because it was so many, but it didn't. The rain held off till I put the last two trailers up, so that was cool as well. Regent Rents out of Chesapeake, they live local here in Currituck on the Sound. Sean and Danielle Jennings, I want to thank them, because we got light trailers from them, and it was going to cost the county about 1,500 bucks, and they donated them. We just had to go pick them up, so I volunteered my dad, my son, one of my employees, and we went and got them. And like I said, so zero cost for the parade, that's saving the taxpayer dollars. I'm not running again, so I can say that. But the, you know, like I said, just, it was huge of them to do that. He was out of town, so he was like, look, I, you know, they were tied up to deliver. He was like, you know, we'll look out for the county if you come pick them up. So, I said, okay, deal. Odom's Landscaping, Pete Odom, who's a county employee, one of our light trailers broke that the sheriff's office owns, I used it as a generator, but Pete let me borrow his, and he brought it out and set it up. So, I mean, it's a team effort from the county, and that's your county staff. The food vendors were amazing, and they were so busy when it was over. I asked one of the guys, what'd they have left for eat, for dinner, and he said he had some ketchup packets if I was hungry. So, they sold, that's how busy it was. So, Cameron and her staff are amazing. This year, she threw Adam into the mix. Adam helped with Sheila and Ella. They do so much, and like she said, they pulled a minimum 12-hour day to help with the parade. The sheriff's office was huge. Lieutenant Taylor organized a bunch of stuff to help out, just because last year, we typically always had like four deputies, which was good, but this year we had more, and we needed it. So, just for safety for the citizens and everybody, and everything went good. Mary Beth with Emergency Management, her and Olivia did a ton. Chris Bailey with Fire and EMS, and Chief Melton, all them, they did a huge solid. And I do want to recognize one employee that, like, nobody probably even knew this, but Parks and Rec Jason's staff, they got good people. Larry Brown was out there Sunday for about five hours picking up trash by himself, and then the whole staff was out there today to keep our Commerce Park, which is an amenity to the community, keep it looking good. So, it's a big group that goes in together to make it a success, and it's borderline getting almost too big to, you know, we might have to maybe not tell the date that the parade is next year to the citizens to maybe have a few less people. But, you know, it was awesome, and it's fun to watch little kids. I mean, like I said, it's worth every dollar, every hour, every minute that's put into it. Like you said, and I know Cameron and her people, they, the festivities that they have, they do a really good job. And like I said, it can't be done without the team effort of the county, and that's the type of staff of the employees that we have here in the county. So, like I said, you can do nothing but commend everybody on the whole thing, like I said, because a lot goes to it. And we did have a couple floats canceled at the last minute, which wasn't a bad thing, because we had, every year it grows, and the population of attendees grows. So, hopefully, like I said, we might just have to lie and put a false date out there when the parade hits and have it. Just kidding.
It's a good thing you're not running again.
Yeah, I know, right? Yeah, that might make some people mad. But, yeah, like I said, it was a super success. Everybody, you know, there's so much planning and coordinating, and like I said, Cameron, she's super organized, and she did a great job, her people and our people and everything, so hats off. But Regent Rents saved the county $1,500, taxpayer dollars. That was awesome of him. Sean, you're not getting a discount on your taxes, so he's watching the meeting tonight, but I would like to thank him for that. And then condolences to the Cheek family. Chris Cheek did a lot of volunteering, Don's son, with the sheriff's office. And when you, we would write county ordinance violations, he would come every afternoon and volunteer, and would collect them, and then go forth, and you'd turn them in to Chris, and he would even be out there inspecting your vehicles to make sure they were clean. Anybody who knows Chris, and I found out today that he's doing, he works three days a week at a PD down there, volunteers, where they stay in Florida. So, because he did not want to move from Currituck when they moved to Florida because of his dad's health. But Don was, he was a huge asset to the county, Corolla Light, you know, everything, good, good, top-notch guy, ate a few meals with Don, and he was always just such a good person. And I'm sorry for his family, for, that's a huge asset to the county that we will miss. And I think that's it for me. Merry Christmas to everybody. This is our only meeting of the month.
No, we have another one.
Oh, we have another one? I thought we were only having one. Man, y'all got excited. But no, I'm just kidding.
You gotta earn that $14,000.
I know, right? What is it? But, yeah, like I said, it's, you know, we might not always make the right decision or make everybody happy, but we try. So, like you said, and we live in a great place. The parade was a huge showing of how much, how awesome it is here, you know, of just the citizens involved in coming and showing out, and we appreciate it. And I'm not going to say Merry Christmas yet, because now I was just was informed that we have another meeting. I guess that was my Christmas gift from the board. I thought we only had one.
I mean, we can cancel it if you want to. I mean, the staff's not going to get paid, but, you know, that's not...
But, yeah, like I said, so, and, oh, the Christmas assistance thing, too, last thing, I forgot. My commissioner's comments have been short lately, so... But I think we start shopping Wednesday night, the FOP does, for the kids, and we have a hu, I think we have 104 kids on our list for the ones. It's a combination of social services and everything. So, if you can, if you can give, please, you know, give, because there's some kids that, that's going to be all they get. So, that's it for me.
All right.
Thanks.
Oh, and anything on your mind this evening?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Commissioner Jarvis said, I attended the ribbon cutting for Maria Holland and Associates last Thursday, and I agree with her. It's a much-needed service and new business in Lower Currituck, and I was glad to be able to attend it. I attended the Crawford Volunteer Fire Department Christmas dinner and party last night, and one thing that I take away from when I attend those types of celebrations is the sense of family and community that these volunteer fire departments have for the citizens of Currituck County. And lastly, the Christmas parade, I had the privilege of riding in one of the floats, the Republican Party float, and we went through over 2,500 pieces of candy that we threw out, and 250 American flags that we gave out to little kids and whatnot. And Renee and my dog, Ellie Mae, was our mascot for the party float, and the only thing she told me that she missed, she got hundreds of hugs and kisses from people, and she gave them, was the fact that she didn't see her Uncle Ike out there so that she could give him a kiss.
Reunited.
But it was great, and Cameron, and kudos to Kevin and the staffs that worked so hard to put this thing on together. And the one comment that I did get asked several times was, where was the commissioner's float? float? I had been saving up rotten tomatoes so we could throw when they went by. I said, well, just wait till next year.
All right. Thanks, sir. All right, moving on. Next up is.
Oh, one last thing.
Yes, sir.
Point of personal privilege, tomorrow's my wedding anniversary, and I want to wish my lovely wife Renee happy anniversary.
Happy anniversary to both of you.
Well, then, along with that, my wife's birthday is tomorrow, so we wish her happy birthday along with your anniversary.
I'll refer them both to counseling stuff that they, for having to put up with you two.
Do I need to start adding kids' birthdays?
No, because we'd be here a lot.
We would like to leave before Christmas. All right. Next up, county manager report. Ike, anything on your mind this evening?
Just a few things, Mr. Chairman. I want to let the public know that registration for the 2024 session of Citizens Academy is now open. Persons that are interested may go to the county's website page under Department tab, go to the Public Information Officer tab, and there's a registration form there. It will be from February 1st through April 18th, 12-week period of time for folks to learn about their county government. Secondly, the county's safety program, which is overseen by our risk management administrator, Victor Lasher, recently scored a 100% grade on a review of our employee safety program and activity. That will result from our insurer in a reduction in our premiums for general liability and workers' compensation, $30,000 over a two-year period. So congratulations to our employee safety committee, Victor Lasher, and the folks in human resources for heading up that effort. Also, just want to remind the community that we have a health clinic here in Currituck County, over at our health department facility in the governmental center. There is the opportunity for folks to access primary care through that operation, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. I have met with the Alamo Regional Health Services Director, and I know Mike Payment on the Health Board has been, they've been talking about how we can enhance the use of that facility. And so we've talked about some ideas going forward as they get additional primary care physician or nurse practitioner.
Well, just an update, I had a meeting last week with them, and there are two candidates that are probably becoming soon nurse practitioners to help with, so we'll be adding that relatively soon.
Right, so we hope to rebrand that with the Health Department and make sure that our citizens know there's another primary care facility here for them to access. And then lastly, there is on your agenda tonight in the budget amendments, monies for rewrite, review and rewrite of the county's personnel policy. We have retained a consultant we've been putting under contract, and we've asked him to focus on the critical areas of the personnel policy that we need to believe that need reviewing and modification. That first section will be the disciplinary process. And so that will give the opportunity, rather than having to wait for a complete document, to allow us to bring it to the board as those reviews are taking place to include them or modify our personnel policy.
Can I add, just a quick question? I think, if I'm not mistaken, is there a, is the county sponsoring a, is there a blood drive this Thursday?
Yes, there is.
So can citizens sign up for some, so if you want to give blood, I think it's going to be at the courtroom?
It will be at the courtroom C in the judicial building.
Okay, so if you, yeah, if you want to roll up your sleeves, I think that's the room to sign up.
Yeah, cookies.
Owen, four times.
That's all I have. Anything else? All right, thank you. All right, next up is the administrative reports. And tonight, we are going to go through an airport layout plan and review from Talbert and Bright.
While they're walking up, I forgot to say, and I just looked at my list, William Nelson, our airport director, huge part and play in the Christmas parade as well, helping out and his staff. Thank you, William. So you're getting a special thing. So he did a lot to really help out. So I apologize. When you said his name, I looked and saw it on my sheet, so thank you again, William.
Yes, sir.
So much for the cheat sheet.
I know, right?
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for letting us come and take some of your time tonight to present just an overview of the airport layout plan. This is a very big document, so you'll just see a little bit of it, but all this can be available to you if you'd like to review it. This has been ongoing for several years. It's an update to our current ALP. It's a working document. These things are not set in stone, but it gives us guidance on where we are to take the future of the airport and future development and growth. I want to introduce John Massey. He's our project manager from Talbert and Bright, who handles our projects. So he'll be presenting, and if there's any questions that he or I can answer as we go along, please let us know.
All right, thank you, William. All right, so yes, I'm not going to read through every page of this document tonight, and you'll be pleased with that. So this was a pretty comprehensive study, as William mentioned, this being kind of a master plan narrative portion of the project. And then these 15 drawings, which I'll just kind of go through briefly tonight, make up what's called the airport layout plan. Okay, so just kind of wanted to start and probably tell you guys some things you already know about your airport, but just kind of set the stage. Currituck Regional Airport is one of 62 publicly-owned airports in the state of North Carolina. NC DOT Division of Aviation classifies all of the general aviation airports in the state. And so that highest classification is a business-class regional airport. So Currituck Regional Airport is classified by them as a business-class regional airport. There are 16 of them in the state. So your airport serves a wide range of users in addition to the local-based aircraft owners in Currituck County and the surrounding areas. You also serve a large number of tourists that come through the airport. There are some businesses, companies that are doing business here in the county and surrounding areas. College of the Alamo Marl Aviation Systems Technology Program, they're based at the airport. Military operations, flight training, and available for emergency management. So as shown by this file, or shown by this exhibit, there are filed flight plans for pilots coming to and leaving Currituck County. And as you can see from this slide, this is prepared by Itree with NC State University. You're reaching much further than just Currituck County and the state of North Carolina. You've got filed flight plans from 2020 that are extending well west of the Mississippi, as far out as Washington State and California.
Could I interrupt real quick?
Sir.
William, when did you start with us?
2019.
So this, just to put it in perspective, this report is almost three years old. William has had a significant impact on all the other blue dots that we're probably already servicing right now that aren't going to be reflected in this, because we've had an exponential increase in fuel sales, which means greater airline traffic, just for perspective.
And again, these are just filed flight plans. This is not every aircraft that's coming in and out of the airport. These are just filed flight plans. And you can see there's even a flight to Central America.
To.
To.
Not from.
To Central America, that's correct. So Currituck Regional Airport, also known as ONX, serves a wide range of aircraft. Single-engine, twin-engine piston aircraft that are based at the airport is shown here. Military operations, you've got operations occurring both daytime and nighttime. And then you've got a wide range of jet aircraft that are operating in and out of the airport. Some of those jets are a couple million dollars. And then you're looking at these Gulfstreams, that Gulfstream 550 at the lower corner of the screen, that's in excess of $50 million aircraft coming in and out of the county. As Commissioner Beaumont indicated, those operational numbers are really ticking up here at the airport. So in the last few years, ONX has installed some equipment in the terminal building that tracks operations, those operations being either a takeoff or a landing. And that's receiving a signal from the aircraft that has that technology installed in it. So not every aircraft has that technology, so these numbers only represent the aircraft that have that current technology. So in 2022, you had almost 15,000 operations. And already this year, you're at 22,000, projected to go all the way to 24,000 operations. So again, a takeoff or a landing. So like any business that relies on customers, providing a high level of customer service is important. I know that's something that William and his staff really take pride in and strive for. You know, they roll out the red carpet, just like shown right there. I mean, they literally do for the airports and the customers coming into the airport. And he even mentioned to me, when you walk in the terminal building, there's a red carpet at both of the doors, because again, both of those are the front doors, right? Two front doors of that building. Business-class airports should provide high levels of infrastructure and facilities, providing sufficient runway length and pavement strength, reliable and safe instrument approaches, hangar facilities for both small and corporate aircraft, apron space for aircraft to park, maneuver, and fuel, first-class terminal building and meeting facilities, as well as aircraft fueling facilities. So in order to continue to adequately serve these customers, how do we determine what facilities are going to be needed today and in the future? So FAA and NC DOT Division of Aviation require that all general aviation and commercial service airports have a 20-year development plan. And that's derived through the master planning process and your airport layout plan, which is also referred to as your ALP. So you're required, in order to receive state and grant funds for projects at your airport, you have to have an ALP in place. And any project that you complete at the airport has to be shown on your ALP. FAA has established a pretty fixed methodology for this planning effort. So it starts with looking at the existing conditions at the airport, looking at your facilities and operations. Then aviation forecasts are developed over a 20-year period, and you're also defining what's the critical aircraft at the airport. Then we're going to look at what facilities do you need to meet the forecasted growth demands, as well as meet any FAA or NC DOA design standards. Alternatives are developed to figure out the best way to meet, to provide those facilities at the airport. A preferred development alternative is established, and a capital improvement plan that phases that construction over the 20 years is prepared. And then all of this culminates in the airport layout drawing, which again, these are the documents that get approved by FAA and Division of Aviation. And that is where the 20-year development plan is established. So just real quickly, an inventory of the existing conditions at the airport. You've got a 5,500-foot runway, a full parallel taxiway, a terminal building, apron space, and hangars. That generally what makes up your airport. One of the biggest issues that I know William has at the airport today is limited space for aircraft parking, maneuvering, and fueling. When he has several large jets come in, or even several small jets come in, he has to sometimes park them almost a quarter of a mile from the terminal building in order to allow other operations to continue there. There's also very limited room in the current cleared area for hangar development. As I mentioned, as part of the forecast, critical aircraft is established. And so that is the largest and most demanding aircraft within a composite family of aircraft that's conducting at least 500 annual operations. So what we were looking at earlier, there are some much larger aircraft that are operating at the airport than these smaller jets, but they're not operating 500 annual operations each year. So these aircraft that you show, that I show on the screen here, the Citation XLS and the Citation Latitude, those are the aircraft that are used as the starting point for the planning process. So once we've got the forecast developed, we're then determining what facilities are needed to reach, meet those forecasts and meet FAA and NC DOA design criteria. So as part of the study, we identified what airfield facilities are going to be needed in the next 20 years. Additional runway length, extending the runway from 5,500 to 6,000 feet, improving the pavement condition and increasing the strength of the pavement. The majority of that concrete, well, all of the concrete pavement out there that makes up the runway, which is 4,000 feet, that is the original concrete from 1940s. And there has been really no significant improvement done to that pavement. There's been some maintenance that's gone over the last 80 years. But, you know, that's six to seven inches of concrete pavement with the additional operations that you're seeing in larger aircraft, that concrete pavement is going to deteriorate much quicker. Some of the improvements also included new LED runway and taxiway light systems and approach path indicators, which provide additional visual guides for aircraft landing at the airport. So this exhibit that you see here extends the runway to 6,000 feet by constructing additional 500 feet on the north end of the runway. Within the terminal area, again, as I mentioned earlier, you're really constrained with parking, maneuvering, fueling operations. So some of the facilities that were identified to be needed are additional apron space, a much larger apron to allow for these safe operations, a new fuel farm at a different location, ultimately constructing a new terminal building next to the apron, and then constructing hangars that can base smaller and larger aircraft and a significantly larger number of hangars. I think we showed about 75,000 square foot of hangar space is the current shortage at the airport based on the demand. So what you see here is the terminal area plan that incorporates some of these items I was just discussing. Additional apron space that's located to the north side, to the right-hand side on the screen of the apron where those black aircraft are parked. Fueling facilities in that area. Additional hangar, T-hanger space, box hangar space, corporate hangar space, as well as providing a taxiway that runs from the airport and connects in with the Maple Commerce Park. So as I mentioned, this project culminated in development of this airport layout plan set. And again, as mentioned, as William mentioned, you know, this is not set in stone. This is a plan that can change as the needs of the county and the airport change. And those changes don't have to be implemented through a large master plan ALP update. They can be done through pen and ink changes with NC DOT Division of Aviation. But this does give you a path to move forward with your 20-year development plan at the airport. Just wanted to really quickly walk through these pages that make up your ALP. It's 15 sheets, starting with the cover sheet. This is the existing conditions plan at the airport depicting what's out there today. This is your airport layout drawing showing the proposed 20-year development plan at the airport. An airspace drawing, looking at airspace surrounding the airport. Again, runway profile and that, your approach paths coming into the runway, 10,000 feet beyond the end of the runway. These are what are called inner approach drawings. These look at objects close in to the end of the runway. Beyond the end of runway five, you've got some really tall power lines. You've got some trees out there on either side of the runway. This just looks to see if any of those are obstructions to your current approach. Runway 23 approach, again, looking at objects out in the approach under the existing conditions and under future conditions. This is a tabulation of all of those objects that were reviewed. And those were approach surface drawings, these are departure surface drawings. So looking at the surface that aircraft depart on as they leave both runway five and runway 23. And this is your terminal area plan that we reviewed a few minutes ago, showing that 20-year development and how it's phased over those 20 years. And as what's shown in the brown area is either beyond the 20-year needs or, you know, on-demand type development. Land use drawings for on-airport and off-airport. And finally, your airport property map. So everything that's shaded in white there is current airport property, and we're identifying properties that are adjacent to the airport. Ultimately, when anybody asks you to look at your airport layout plan, what is your 20-year development plan? What they're looking at is your airport layout drawing, which shows the 20-year plan, how that 20-year development is phased. And this is the plan that is ultimately reviewed and approved by NC DOA and FAA. I know that was a real quick overview of this, but answer any questions and talk through anything that you all.
The expected 24,000, I guess, was, does that include like the military when they do their training?
If they have the, do they have ADS-B on those aircrafts? So if they have the technology.
I know some days they have, they have more than others, and so I just was curious on that.
So does a touchdown count as two or one?
It would count as two operations, a landing and a takeoff.
It's important to have just as many landings as takeoffs.
Yeah, exactly. One, where he said about the fuel farm, we just received, what, like a $1.2 or $1.1 million for the expansion of the fuel?
Yeah, so you all just received some grant funding for the expansion, well, for the construction of a new fuel farm.
Yes.
At the different location that we have shown on there.
Yes, so that was one.
So that's going to be constructed at the location shown on the airport layout.
As well as there's multiple other grant funds, I believe, approved, and then hopefully some coming in the future as well.
Correct.
One of the, and I'm sure there's a grand scheme of this, but one of the concerns I have, and that's, we know we need to extend the runway, strengthen, replace the concrete that's there. While our business keeps increasing, it's going to be a major disruption to do what needs to get done to that airport. And in the back of my brain, I'm like, the longer, it's going to be bad, the longer we, and I know it's pending state DOT funding and all that, but the longer we take to get that work done, the worse it's going to be. And with all of the projects that you've just identified and some of the other ones that we know are coming, what is our, I mean, do we have a mitigation strategy? Because I got to believe we're going to have no runway for a minute.
And so there, you know, when we, if you're extending the runway, there are ways to mitigate using the remaining portion of the runway.
I got that.
It's the rehabilitation of the runway which is going to be the big impact. So you can do it in pieces, which obviously then only allows you to have smaller sections of runway available, but that's going to really.
I can show you all kinds of aircraft photos where they tore up a middle section and no one got the word until the hurt hit it.
Yep.
So we are, we are working with Division of Aviation currently on a plan to have our runway rehab. We've explained, we've showed them our growth of 14,000 to 24,000 in operations. Those operations are very important. That counter that we have now, before that, it was somebody sitting at a desk counting every takeoff and landing, which if you know how that works and what else we do at the airport, not every landing got counted. So now every landing that has that system.
Which is still only a percentage of the actual aircraft traffic.
There's probably well over 30,000 operations that go on. There's flight schools still that don't have those trackers on there. There's aircraft that don't have electrical systems at all. They come into our airport because it's uncontrolled, it's not a towered airport, they're not required to have those radios and things onboard.
So when our lobbyists spoke, I mean, they were successful this year with aviation funding, but this has got to be, this has got to be like one of our top priorities for as soon as it can. I mean, I know it's, we're going into. I mean, I know it's, we're going into short session next year, but it, it's got to be on the next legislative because this is going to be a chunk of change. I mean, that's going to be an expensive project.
Certainly had the attention of Representative Goodwin. I mean, he, he was through most of the session kind of looking at, we need $10 million for runway rehabilitation. We ended up with $4 million, but I think we still have some other opportunity seeking funding from the General Assembly, particularly given the status of our airport.
And, and I would expect this to be part of the 1090, which is, most of our airport funding is 10% county, 90% state, but 10% of this project is still going to be a significant, I mean, that's going to be a lot of money.
What will be involved in air, the runway rehabilitation? What will actually take place?
Well, there's a couple of different options that we'll have to really study on, you know. One option would be you overlay it with asphalt, but that's not going to be a good option. Actually, I was just speaking with the representative at Division of Aviation recently and we were talking, well, he, they were there, what, about a month ago? And they actually got boots on the ground and saw some of the, some of the poor condition of the pavement out there, which was good for them to actually physically see it. And he actually recently mentioned to me, said, well, do you think they'd go for a concrete overlay? I said, well, I don't, I don't know. You know, the other option is you have to reconstruct the whole runway. So, again, we have to look at different options, cost for different options, impact to your operations, timeframe for those options. So again, we'll have to work through that to, to determine what the best.
With, with the extra 500 feet of runway and the aircraft that we're trying to bring in, their increased weights, the concern with a concrete overlay is going to be, that's not going to be, I mean, that's not going to be a long, long-term fix. That's going to wind up creating maintenance issues down the line.
Well, a concrete overlay, it would end up being like a 10-inch overlay of concrete. I mean, if you were to really overlay this to accommodate the aircraft, it would be a pretty significant overlay of that concrete pavement. But again, we'd have to go through and, and do that design to really get an idea of what, what you need.
Wait, what's the, because the current is what, like six to seven inches?
Inches, that's right.
So, and those, those, our target jet does not weigh more than what we can currently handle, but those large jets that.
That 650 couldn't bag out, so.
The good thing is when you start looking at the pavement design, though, you don't necessarily have to only look at your critical aircraft. You look at the aircraft that are actually using the airport.
Right.
So we've had two chances this year, which has been more than in the last four years that I've been here, to meet with Division of Aviation with boots on the ground. They've had the chance to physically see the jets, the large jets that we get come in, which is great. When they finally see that and see that it's not just, you know, me showing them the same pictures every time they come out to the airport, that they actually physically see the aircraft sitting there and see how it impacts the airport and the parking and things like that. They, they were, it's the meeting we had about a month ago with them was probably one of the better meetings we had. They realized that they need to start thinking about Currituck, think about us out here on the coast and the traffic we're getting, the tourists that we have coming to our community.
And, and when we talk, and, and that's the problem, I mean, they probably know more, but as a group here, unless you've been, because the timing was perfect, right? That day I went out and that there was a 650 on the ramp. You cannot appreciate how big that jet is. That is a no kidding, that is a big jet. It's probably 70 feet long?
It's, it's got almost 100-foot wingspan.
It's a big jet.
It can weigh a max weight of almost 100,000 pounds.
Right. And to put that in perspective, that wingspan is about the same as a 737.
It's also, I mean, our runway is 150 wide.
Yeah, which is very nice.
It is, it's very nice. And that was one thing that we stressed in our meeting is that we'd like to keep the runway 150 wide. That is the reason that we get the big jets we get, they wouldn't come to us otherwise. Even if we had 6,000 feet and it was only 75 wide, which is what typical airports are, they wouldn't choose us as their airport to land at. That width makes a big difference for them. It also is the only reason we can handle those jets right now. I mean, with 100-foot wingspan, our taxiways are small, our parking area is small, they're just pleased to see a big runway when they get here, so.
So, one of the things that we haven't talked about this evening, and we, we had it in our consent agenda and caught a little bit of flack about it, was Elizabeth City State University is planning on, you know, partnering with us to do some stuff out here. I wonder if you might take a minute to talk about that and what they're going to do and why that is so important to us and, and US Airport Director.
So, Elizabeth City State, they reached out to us about, about a year ago to discuss how they can grow. Currently, they're in Elizabeth City and they are going to stay in Elizabeth City, but they have no room for growth there. That's a Coast Guard joint, military base, civilian base there. They've got a corner of that airport and they're going to run out of room with the growth of their program. So they were looking and they're planning to grow across the state of North Carolina. We will be the first of many hubs, is what they're calling, what they're bringing to us. They're going to bring hangar space for their aircraft and they're going to be doing flight operations out of there. They are already at our airport. Those 24,000 operations, Elizabeth City State, on some days, they do over 100 landings at our airport, on certain days of the summer and the good days. So they're already here. Currently, they don't stop in for fuel, all they do is touch and go. So we'll be getting that traffic and getting them based there. Their operations will also, they'll increase as they get to our airport because they're not just doing landings, they're taxiing, they're doing other things on the airport. They'll be buying fuel from us. Elizabeth City State is not just bringing their aviation program to us, they're going to be building classrooms and in hopes to partner with our emergency management that we have here and with COA being right there on the campus with their maintenance facility and others. So, that'll bring great things to the county to have a four-year university that has a campus in Currituck County. The land that the county has, is giving to Elizabeth City State, that, we're not giving up rights to the airport. That land is going to be done through a through-the-fence agreement. It'll be just like our airpark on the other side. That agreement is, is by the FAA. We had to go for approval for that. If, you know, if there's concern of Elizabeth City State taking over or running our airport, it's not a concern. They have strict guidelines that they have to follow by the FAA to keep that through-the-fence agreement open. So they, they will bring a lot of things to the table for us. Yes, they are state, you know, entity, they will not be paying, you know, tax on the aircraft being there or the facilities, but they will be purchasing fuel, they will be providing a four-year university right here in the county. Those things are also, when we have businesses that come that we've, we apply for, we put in applications to Division of Aviation to get these large businesses here to the county that need an airport. One of those things is, is, you know, on that checklist is, do you have a community college? Do you have a four-year university? Is there a hospital and other things in the county? With them being here, we'll be able to check that block of a four-year university.
And also, them being a four-year university like that and with the program that they have, isn't, don't, doesn't that also bring the opportunity for federal or other types of funding and help with getting those to help feed into our economy and into this airport?
Absolutely. Right now, I mean, if you looked at the growth of the Elizabeth City Airport over the years, they grew about like how we did, a little bit at the time, a project here, a project there. Since Elizabeth City State has turned their program around and really made it a, a top-notch program, that airport has received millions of dollars in funds to build out the rest of that airport, to put up a new terminal building, to put up hangars to accommodate what they already have there. Elizabeth City State has over 14 training airplanes. They go in and out of that airport every day. They had to have hangars to house just that. Their intention is to double that fleet.
Isn't the technology too that they're working on or developing too with the drones? They're, like, I mean, I think there was some talk too possibly even because, I mean, that, that technology is really starting to take off. And I think they, they just, what, they had a groundbreaking out too long ago there, right?
They did, they had a groundbreaking, they just partnered with Wake Tech Community College as well, out in Raleigh with their drone program. That is the up and coming future of aviation is drones. Now, that facility most likely won't, they won't have a big presence at the airport, but they'll be able to take classes out there in their classroom facilities. So, it's a great thing to have them here, it's a great thing to have a four-year university knocking on the door of your airport to, to bring that to you. The flight school, that's a four-year university flight school. It will not be in any competition to any other program that we currently have at Currituck. It will only help, it'll bring more people and more awareness to our airport. The other, in my mind, the biggest benefit along with the funding that will potentially be eligible for just because we have that university there, is the fact that Elizabeth City State has partnered with United American and Delta Airlines. Those people will be coming through the groundbreaking and seeing our airport and seeing the future of what it could be. There's certainly, as we look at our ALP and, and the growth, we have a great airport for growth. The county has done a great job over the years to have the land around it being airport property and county property, which if you look at a lot of airports, and John, he services a lot of airports with Talbot Bright, and he could tell you that not many airports are like us that have the property next door to utilize.
William, if you could touch on too, like, you know, when those, like, the schools, be it a two-year or a four-year, when they have programs and they want to be a part of Currituck County or whatever, like, I mean, if we would have said, hey, we're not interested at all having, you know, I mean, that just shuts the door as far as state and federal grants and funding. I mean, now by partnering with them, I mean, if I'm correct, when me and you've talked about this multiple times before, I mean, the floodgates open now for the millions of dollars that the county's going to be able to snatch a hold of from the different grants and the different, the programs that the state's going to put towards it, correct?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Yeah, it, by not partnering, if we were to choose not to partner with them, they'll just go to the next county. And our airport is a 25-minute drive from their university to us, whereas other airports around us could be 40 to 50-minute drive. It's a great fit. And again, like I say, there's not going to be a huge increase of air traffic, they're already here. They fly directly, you could look it, look it up, they fly directly from Elizabeth City to Currituck to enjoy the airport over there. So they're there. All we're doing is welcoming, welcoming, welcoming them in to also purchase some fuel from us.
The other thing I would add is that because this is a public airport, it's like a public road. You cannot say, all right, we've meet, we've met the day's quota of aircraft, no one else is allowed to come in. Because we operate within the FAA system by law, it is open to the public for any legitimate aircraft to use. You could even have a 747 do a low approach, they may not be able to land there or touch down there, but they can shoot an instrument approaching our airport completely legal, which would be louder than the helicopters circling.
It's a part of our, our grant assurances with the federal and state funds that we do accept to work with.
Right.
Anybody that is interested in our airport. And I can tell you, weekly, I sit down with people to discuss what they would like to bring to us. And we just wait for the first person that's actually bringing something to us. But we entertain it all the time and work with anyone in the community that would like to utilize our airport. It's here for the community. And it's certainly a very nice one, we get great compliments from all of the people that fly in of how nice the airport is kept and the facilities we have. And when they find out that the runway's 80 years old, they're wowed at, at how well-kept it is. But, as John said, with the increase of traffic and the jets.
It's going to start showing its age.
It's going to start showing its age.
Well, thank you, thank you for that.
One, one last question.
Yes, sir.
With the recent appropriation that we got from the General Assembly, what's the plans for that appropriation?
So we have a meeting next week to get the guidance on how we move forward with that funding. We have to do everything through the Division of Aviation, part of our grant assurance as well. Any project we do is funneled through the Division of Aviation, no matter how we accept, accept the funds, even if it's county funds that we put out. But, our intention is to build hangars. That's our need, as John said, 75,000 square feet is needed. Our hangar waiting list is long. We're going to build hangars to bring more people to the airport, to bring more tax dollars to the county.
And that, that was 4 million, correct?
4 million, yes, sir.
I'd like to make a comment. I appreciate you, William, mentioning about the people who train here, they're already here, because there has been a lot of talk that since we're bringing Elizabeth City State in, that it's going to just ruin everything for what you have worked so hard for. And to let the public know that they're already here, we're just getting a benefit now from it.
I invite anyone to come out and sit at the airport, come in, have a cup of coffee, sit in the conference room and watch the airplanes that land and look at the wing as they go by. It says ECSU underneath them. They're, they're utilizing it, just as anyone else has the right to utilize our public airport, they're utilizing it. They're there, they're willing to work with us. And they, they have turned that program around. It is a top-notch facility. Again, it should show with American Airlines, United, Delta, and the others that are trying to partner with them to funnel their students into their programs.
But they turned their program around and you turned our airport around and we appreciate it.
Well, I'm happy to be here and happy to be working for the county.
Well, well, thank you for expounding on that. While we were talking about the airport, I just, you know, wanted to bring up the fact that we had this in our consent agenda for the general public. The reason it was in the consent agenda is because Elizabeth City State asked us to keep it quiet until they could do a public announcement. So, we felt that it was appropriate to, we, we needed to do something to show our commitment to them. And, and, and giving them the two lots that we did, I think you illustrated very well that, that, that what we're going to receive on the back end, it's, it was, it's pennies compared to the ultimate, you know.
And the fact of getting, I know we've had one vertical development in that park, but to get a hangar facility that will be publicized, I think there's a great chance of the rest of that park being filled out with potentially other aviation businesses by showing, it's hard for people to see the vision when you drive through it and it's wooded, it's very beautiful. I love driving through it every day, but it's hard to see the vision of what it could be. But I think when we put.
And, and as part of that agreement, you know, when they create this taxiway out, they're going to have to allow people through their property to access the other ones if, if we need to extend the taxiway. So, there was some thought that went into it, we didn't do it blindly and of course, much of that has to do with you.
And we, we've been working, I could say, for a year and, and communicating with the FAA on this. This is not, we don't just decide that we can do this. It, it has, again, we're a public airport, we accept federal and state funds, we have to go to the FAA and to the Division of Aviation. We had countless meetings to work through this. The FAA was ecstatic when they found out that we were, that Elizabeth City State was looking at our airport. They thought it was a great idea and a great fit, so, which is unusual to get a fast response from the FAA.
Right. All right, thanks, sir. Anything else for the gentleman?
William just does an excellent job. I was texting him this morning at 6: something when I was picking up one of the lights from the Christmas parade, because it was inside the airport taxiway. And I was texting him a message, hey, I'm grabbing the lights, you know, let your guys know. And my phone rings, it was William. So, I mean, he was already at work, you know, he's, just keep up the good work. I mean, the county's fortunate and I know you love your job and you're passionate about it and the airport's going to be successful as long as he's there.
Glad it is. All right, thank you, gentlemen, very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, let's take a five-minute recess and then we'll finish up the rest of our Meeting back into order. We're jumping to new businesses, our next agenda item. First thing, ordinance to amend the code of ordinances, section 11 dash 29, waste receptacle enclosures. Ike?
Mr. Chairman, this ordinance is drafted by the county attorney. She actually utilizes a model ordinances from other communities that have in particular bear populations that get into garbage cans. And so, she found that helpful as she crafted this one. This ordinance relates to properties on the north beach and in particular to address the issues with regard to wildlife, wild horses, and then the, the winds and other envi, other weather-related issues that cause garbage to, cans to turn over sometimes and spill garbage everywhere around the, the north beach. So if you look at page five of your agenda package, line seven is the beginning of the amendment which provides for and requires an enclosure for garbage cans. And it lays out the, the minimal requirements for its construction. Went on to the next paragraph D at line 19, makes it a, an exemption basically for a requirement of an enclosure if solid waste receptacles that meet other requirements of the ordinance are to be placed at, at the curb side no late, earlier than 6:00 AM, the morning of trash pickup, and then to be removed at the end of the day, of the day of crap, trash pickup. The next section as an amendment is at line 26. And this may not be necessary, but I'll leave it to the board to decide, but it does provide that any enclosed structure or solid waste receptacle not meeting the requirements of the ordinance by January 1, 2024 is excluded from and ineligible for receiving any contracted solid waste disposal service from the county. Well, we currently don't, do not have any county-paid solid waste collection service.
Well, if we do that, I guess it's in the future if we had something, right? That would be future use.
Yeah, and it obviously would have no applicability now, but it, it could in the future.
Before we go too much further, thought occurs, we had, the current ordinance requires the full drive to have the receptacles out by the road, the bins, the old bins, right? Does that, has, has that changed? Does that, has that changed? Because?
There is no change. Again, the only thing that mentions about, not required an enclosure is, again, that exception if you bring your garbage can, solid waste container actually to the street the morning of collection.
Okay.
Ike, you said that it was for the Northern Beaches. Are we talking really just Carova?
Yes, because it's.
It's not Corolla, right? It's just single-family remote.
Single-family remote, which is only that area from Corolla, from the beach.
Access.
Access ramp to, north of the state line.
Okay.
Okay.
Ike, if the, far as, with that ordinance change, so if somebody's not, I mean, that would be like a code enforcement, enforcement on some.
Well, getting on into it, there is a provision for enforcement at, let's begin at line thirty-one. I will note that the county attorney has placed in here a criminal penalty. If that is to remain under legislation adopted by the General Assembly a couple of years ago, you would not be able to adopt this ordinance tonight at its first reading. If there's a criminal penalty in the ordinance, now we're required to have two readings of an ordinance before it can be enacted. So there is a criminal penalty that is provided in this draft, not to exceed, it's a misdemeanor punishable by a fine, not to exceed five hundred dollars, or imprisonment of not more than thirty days or both. There is also a civil penalty provision, which is typically what we do with a code enforcement type of issue, where someone may be issued a civil citation, not to exceed five hundred dollars for each day's violation of the ordinance. And then there's a general remedies section there at line four on page six, which, which allows for any other enforcement or injunctive remedies, which is typically true of any ordinance adopted by the county.
Do we need, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I had a question on page five F. I know everything's, can be interpreted, interpretation, I guess. So it says, I mean, do we have something to define what the county deems as dilapidated rotten, or can that be, I mean, is that based on the county's discretion, or is there actually a?
Well, we, I don't, we don't define those terms, but there are rules of construction for determining the meaning of a term that is not defined within the ordinance, and that generally is looking to the common ordinarily-understood definition of a word, which can be used, using Webster's Dictionary, for example.
Okay. That's one.
Is it, I mean, is criminal penalty, and I don't want to use the word necessary, but is it realistic? I mean, I don't know. I guess that would be up to the sheriff to investigate it and then figure out, I mean, I don't.
Well, I think frankly, more and more, we have, we have been looking to civil remedies for enforcement of our ordinances. There's some exceptions where I think you would certainly want to have a criminal penalty option, but also recognize the General Assembly is looking, giving greater scrutiny to local ordinances that call for a criminal penalty. And so if you find that that is not necessary for this type of ordinance, I think that would be fine to strike the criminal penalty, but certainly you want to retain civil and other remedies.
Now, can I, if, now how about with like, with Senate Bill three hundred and civil penalties, would that be something where this would possibly fall under as well?
The Senate Bill three hundred, which I mean, in a number of different statutes, but it, it really related to, and it lays out certain types of ordinances that are applicable, but this is not one of those.
Okay, that's what I thought that.
Okay. So I don't really see a need for a criminal penalty.
Oh, yeah.
So I think you don't want to deal with arresting someone for a trash can violation.
I gotta do twenty-one days in jail for.
How much resource would that take up? I mean, you know, I just don't.
Well, yeah, most of it's gonna be remedied through a simple fine or civil penalty, right?
And then lastly, I would note, part three on page six of the ordinance, it calls for its effectiveness upon adoption. I think you may want to consider having an extended period of time before it is effective to give people an opportunity to come into compliance.
Okay. And they were, yeah, because we didn't give them any, any time to actually do this. It just becomes effective.
Effective immediately, which obviously folks would not have had the opportunity to understand the ordinance and then have the opportunity to get their enclosure.
So can we put in some kind of a six-month grace period?
I think that certainly would be reasonable.
Make, make the adjustments. I mean, just, just finding someone to build them all is going to be problematic. And speaking with Twitty, I know that they're, they're already prepared to work with their owners and know that this is coming down the line. They are, they're the biggest, right?
It's a lot of lumber.
A lot of lumber. You got people.
Right.
Doing, doing home repairs now and stuff. It's.
Right. So it's gonna take some time for it to work its way in.
Memorial Day, six months.
Six months would, I mean, based on the fourth, so May fourth.
May thirty-first.
Okay, what if they come back to the county and said, look, I've been trying and trying and trying to hire somebody, six months comes along and every contractor out there is booked. If they come with something, can they document for an extension or something?
That's a good question.
I think that we have the discretionary ability. But the other thing is, we gotta run around and police that. So I don't see us running out May thirty-first and going, you know, we can't get anybody to.
But typically with civil, civil penalties.
Just kidding, I don't build those.
If a person comes in and wants to put together a corrective action plan, they allow that kind of opportunity.
Say we do ride out there, somebody does see one, and they haven't gotten it done yet, but they've been trying, so there's a, they can do something.
Right. We have, we have discretion, the manager does, to, if you're making a good-faith effort, right?
Corrective action plan, give them a certain amount of time.
We'll know where the violations are, compliments of social media.
Do we have like what a typical structure looks like?
There's one, there's one.
A lot of legal definition in there, and I appreciate that. But, you know, there are people that probably maintain their own houses and would do it themselves.
And want to have it the same color as their house or the same.
But just stop. But my question is, what does it look like?
Right.
Where do they go find examples of?
I think between now and your next meeting, because again, you can't adopt it tonight at the first reading, reading anyway, that we could put together or find some.
I would ask that we do that.
Some illustration of what it would look like.
There's a couple that, like, over there now that currently have them, so we could probably, with staff, could get a few.
Several, I think several people sent me emails with, actually, Rhonda was just here, her, Chase, her partner is, has a design in mind. I know several people that are builders over there have a design, have several different designs in mind that will work. So ultimately, it's really, and I think Ike brought this up at our meeting, when we were just meeting with locals over there, and that it's up to you to figure out how to make it that way, right? We just, we just want you to do it. So we're not telling you how to design something. We're telling you, you need, you know, and if you hire someone to do that, if you, if you can maintain your own house and you can figure out how to make this, this box, right?
What if they want a chain-link enclosure?
I don't.
Well, I mean, I don't know that it would prohibit that. It just says it has to be resistant to rust, corrosion, and rapid deterioration, and then describes the vinyl.
What could go wrong with chain-link?
Yeah.
Get that vinyl clad. It's been there a long time.
I think we're way overthinking this, because I go stay in a lot of places with bear containers, and everybody out there uses salty lumber for everything. So, I mean, we're just way overthinking this. The reality is, we need to do something, and this is a step in the right direction. So Ike, do we need to vote on this tonight and then bring it back to be reread? Is that what you're saying? Or we have to bring it back with the changes?
I think it'd be best we bring it back with changes.
Okay.
If this constitute its first reading, first introduction.
Okay.
And so you'll be able to adopt it at your next meeting.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Now, what, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna, since, since, I think, I understand you would not be here at the next meeting.
That is correct.
We don't want to run into an issue, another statute which requires for an ordinance to be adopted.
Unanimous, right.
It must, it must have received an unanimous vote. The second reading, it can be then a simple majority. So it'd probably be helpful to vote tonight.
Okay.
And then the next meeting, it will only necessitate a simple majority.
Okay. Well, that being said, does anybody have any major issues, heartburn with this that would, okay. All right, then.
Like I said, just as long as we give the, is the time, do we add?
That would be a striking, a criminal.
Criminal.
Right.
Penalty and effective date, May thirty-one, twenty twenty.
So as we, yeah, so I will move to, move for approval, striking the, the, excuse me, the criminal penalty and adding in a six-month grace period from adoption. So when, when this gets adopted either at the next meeting, then that's when the clock starts, not until we officially adopt it. That is my motion. Second?
Sock it.
Kitty? Any discussion? All in favor?
No.
Aye.
Got anything else?
I was gonna say, I mean, like, if you're not here at the next one, if there's something that we amend to it, I mean.
Then it's just a majority vote on that.
Okay. All right.
All right. Anybody opposed? I'm gonna call for a poll. Okay, thank you. All right. Next up is a resolution establishing the Parks and Rec Advisory Board as the pedestrian advisory committee for the Connect Currituck Plan.
Mr. Chairman, this matter came, comes out of your retreat held back in October. During that retreat, there was presented to you some, some plans that have been adopted some time ago, and for the board to take, to review and determine what is yet to be done as, as advised by those plans. One of those was in the Currituck County Master Development Plan, Connect Currituck Master Development Plan, that there should be a, an advisory board or advisory committee, pedestrian advisory committee, to implement the goals and objectives of that plan. It was the board's thought at that time that, that the county's Parks and Recreation Advisory Board would be best suited as a body to be named as the pedestrian advisory committee under that plan, and so this resolution does that.
Okay, thank you. Discussion for the board. All right. Can I have a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Okay. Who, who, did you get, who made the motion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up is a recommendation of an award for the mainland well site for R O four and authorize the county manager to execute those contracts.
This particular well site, as you may have seen, is located on Maple Road, just beyond the county's mainland water treatment plant. Our engineer recommends after bid opening that the bid for construction of the R O well be awarded to A.C. Schultz in the amount of eight hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred two dollars. That would be staff's recommendation as well.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions?
Motion for approval.
Thank you. Second. Second from Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Consent agenda. We have, want to pull out for discussion the new position of the development liaison. Salina and I both talked about this earlier today, and this little bit, little bit of ambiguity in the name of the position. So both of us felt that something, as, as we were originally talking about, a business development person, does it make sense to maybe rename this a business and development liaison?
I think that, what we've, what I've heard a lot out there is people are really focusing on business growth, business growth. So I think the verbiage of business probably should be in that description somehow.
Right. So.
I mean, what is described here, of course, is not a kind of economic developer position, but it, but it is someone that would help businesses or anyone with a development interest in the county to get through our process.
How about business, did you say business and planning liaison?
Well, business and development liaison.
That's fine.
I mean, just, just, so business is in it.
Yeah, so business is in it somehow.
Right.
I think if you went onto the website and tried to find it, it would be easier to.
Right.
Who would that person?
Business, business.
Right.
County manager, who would that person fall under? Who would their?
It would be housed within the planning department. The planning director would.
Yeah, the job description is actually pretty, pretty diverse. I mean, you gotta know a lot. It's, it's very well-conceived. So thank you to the staff that put that together. All right. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda this evening?
Well, the word we've, when business development liaison.
Well, I mean, if we.
And development.
Can we make that change, change now in description and keep it, keep it on there?
Yeah, it's in the consent agenda. What they can.
You said we were gonna remove it, though, but.
No, no, I pulled it, just wanted to discuss.
Oh, I thought you said you were pulling it out completely. Oh, sorry.
Pulling it out for discussion.
Misunderstanding, sorry.
Yeah, I didn't amend the agenda. So it is in the consent agenda. We just need to note that change on the motion. How's that sound? Mike, you want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Go ahead, Salina.
For approval of the consent agenda with the changes to item three under the business, the business and development liaison.
Thank you.
Sock it.
Thank you all. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Let's see here. I'll recess our regular meeting and move into special meeting of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District Board. We have some budget amendments for that. And let's see here. I don't think I had any questions on that today. Well, while we're talking about this, Ike, how did, how has it gone with the, with this plant? With the, you know, obviously, we're transferring money for violations, but you were having a problem getting someone to come in and reinstall boards or?
Yes, we were making headway. Despite the fact that it's a relatively new plant, we had a number of electrical and software issues. Staff sought to have the original software company to come out and, and work on it and to reprogram the system so that it could function with the software. They were non-responsive. Staff has since found another company to come in and do that work. Physically, the plant also has some components that have failed, particularly the bar screen, which is being constructed and being replaced. And there's some other components down inside the tankage that, that also has corroded away, which is being replaced as well.
Do we have any kind of an ETA on, on all this stuff coming together?
They've received a statement on that, and the, the components, I understand, are on order and or being manufactured.
Okay. Paul, any questions from you? Okay, thank you. All right. Well, with that being said, then I'll move to approve the budget changes.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Third.
He got the nom. I got the second.
There you go. You good?
All in favor?
No. Kevin, Kevin, Kevin was first. Kevin and Paul. Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, we need to enter closed session pursuant to NCGS one four three dash three one eight dot one one A five. To establish or instruct county staff concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the county in negotiating the material terms of a contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase to be used for any public purpose. The property consists of two parcels located at sixty-nine hundred and sixty-eight ninety-four Kerituck Highway and Grandy, and they're owned by Kenneth M. Casa.